Executive session of the Wayne Board of Education regular meeting of October 10, 2024 was convened in the conference room of Wayne Board of Education, 15 hours drive from New Jersey. Statement of compliance setting for date and time location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Talk Meetings Act. The roll call was taken and the meeting is recessed and can now be re-convened. Everyone please stand for flags. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Faber.
Here.
Mr. Giordano.
Here.
Mrs. Landry.
Here.
Mr. Paul.
Here.
Mr. Padlock.
Here.
Mr. Passacos.
Present.
Mrs. Rigoloso.
Here.
And Mrs. Winting.
Here.
Dr. Tullman.
Okay. So this evening, we have much to share with a number of required reports. In a few moments, Mrs. Reichman and Dr. Glass will be sharing the results of our New Jersey standardized testing results from last year. So this time, this is not the most exciting thing, but I'm required to report the SDSS, which is an acronym for the Student Data Safety System. After that, I'll be sharing our annual HIV report, which includes grades for each of our schools. Okay, so here we go. NJSA 18A:17H46 requires me to report all incidents of violence, vandalism, weapons, and substance abuse, offenses, and harassment, intimidation, bullying, which took place in our schools during the reporting period, January 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2024. So statute and required to report to the Board of Education two times per year at a public meeting all acts of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, bullying that occurred during the previous reporting period tonight and reporting those that took place on January 1st and June 30th. It also requires each school district to report more and different data than in the past. For example, all HIV investigations, both alleged and confirmed, must now be reported. In addition, all removals and suspensions for disciplinary reasons must be reported for both general education and special education students. So the numbers being reported may appear higher in some instances than the totals reported in prior years. For that reason, it's tough to draw conclusions for any increases in reporting totals due to the state requiring more information under the new system. Our schools continue to make an excellent record of investigation, documenting, reporting, and handling incidents in a timely and efficient manner. For this reporting period throughout the district, there were 30 incidents of violence. That includes assaults, fights, the things as simple as threats. And so most of our incidents of violence that are reported are fall in the category of threats. Three incidents of vandalism, zero weapons offenses, 17 incidents of substance abuse that include substance possession, suspected, refused exam, use confirmed, or sale and distribution. 155 general code of conduct incidents, which led to educational removal, and 45 confirmed incidents of HIV out of the total of 133 investigated for the second reporting period from last year. The 45 confirmed HIV cases involve the categories of race, 13; ancestry, ethnicity, and national origin, 6; religion, 4; gender, 5; sexual orientation, 4; power imbalance, 3; disability, 1; and distinguishing or perceived characteristic of students, 9. Cases were investigated by the school-level anti-bullying specialists with guidance and support by principals of the district anti-bullying coordinator. Consequences and remediation efforts for offending students include individual counseling, student or parent conferences, discipline in accordance with code of conduct. Remedial measures for targeted students include counseling, support services, parent conferences, schedule changes, stay-away agreements, teacher aid monitors during the school day, adult and student parents, and other monitoring measures. In addition, each school has its own program, including the district-wide initiative No Place for Hate, on the HIV report. All New Jersey public schools are required to complete an annual self-assessment to determine compliance under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. Schools' scores must be presented annually at a public board of education meeting by October 31st. Each school must evaluate performance in eight core areas or elements: HIV programs, training on HIV policy, other staff instruction and training programs, curriculum and instruction on HIV and related information and skills, HIV personnel, school-level HIV incident reporting procedures, HIV investigating procedures, and HIV reporting. Each of the indicators are classified as follows: no points for not meeting criteria, one point for partial compliance, two for meets expectation, and three points for exceeding the expectation. Total possible score, with three awarded in all categories, for the HIV report is 78. So 78 is the maximum score. This year, our district average was 75.8, which indicates that our schools have been able to maintain high levels of student support, even as we reduce the number of HIV complaints from 2023 to 2024. This is thanks to our exceptional professional school counselors who also serve as our anti-bullying specialists. Specific scores are as follows: George Washington, Fallon, JFK, Randall Carter, and Wayne Valley all reported a score of 77; APT, Anthony Wayne, Pack Nak, Pines Lake, and Tunis all reported a score of 76; Ryerson, Scotta Quilfacs, and Wayne Hills reported a score of 75; finally Lafayette and Preakness scored themselves 74 out of 78. A copy of each school's preliminary rubric submissions, that's the specifics of it, is attached to the agenda. It's posted for public review. It's important to note that the site variation in reported scores between our schools still exceeds the standard definition in almost all categories. Thanks once again to our teachers, support staff counselors, child safety members, administrators who work tirelessly to combat bullying collectively and to ensure our schools are safe, welcoming, and positive environments for our students. Now for the HIV report for this current period since your last board meeting. Reporting the following data related to HIV in the Wayne County Public Schools: There have been seven incidents of HIV investigated since my last report, and two of those cases were deemed to meet criteria of HIV incidents. So at this point, we're excited to share the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment results. Those results were able to share lots of information about our district and the performance of our students, and also really it's a very nice thing for our teachers as well. They've done a wonderful job, and you'll see some really great results. And that's all due to the work of a whole team of people focusing on instruction and doing a great job in the classroom. So at this point, Mrs. Reichman and Dr. Glass, and also would you like to remain seated? Or do you want to use the podium? You're good where you are?
I think we're okay here. Are you okay? Okay. You can hear us? We'll talk later. Today, I'm joined by Dr. Glass, one of my esteemed colleagues. He is assistant principal at Wayne Hill High School. He often supports Dr. Kovac and I with data analysis. He has a lot of expertise, and he is completing his school administrator's certificate. So in true Dr. Glass fashion, he's required to attend three board meetings, but also offered to co-present and gain more experience. So that's a testament to him, to his commitment to the district. This slide summarizes what the assessments are, and we really included it, and I'll just give you a summary, I know Dr. Kovac has shared, but tomorrow, the full presentation will be posted online. So anyone who's viewing the presentation tomorrow may say, what are these assessments and what are they measuring? It's a statewide assessment that measures student progress towards meeting English, language arts, mathematics, and science proficiency standards at all grade levels, beginning in third grade. So I want to draw your attention. This is NJSLA results for grades three through nine. The light and dark green bars highlight the large percentage of students who meet and exceed the ELA standards. So you want to combine that, and you're always hoping that the majority of your students are either meeting or exceeding. So you can see, combined altogether, we did really well. If you look at our ninth grade ELA, they did extraordinarily well. So that is a point of pride for the district. This is just another orientation of the same slide, so you can see the actual percentages. It'll be easier to view it tomorrow when it's online. There are some green stars there. It's probably hard for you to see, but that shows that we made significant gains. I just shared in grade nine ELA. And in grade three, we have fewer cusp students for proficiency. So students who are just meeting proficiency standards now live a greater percentage there who have met the proficiency standards or showing that they're exceeding proficiency standards. Sorry, my attention's worn out. This next slide is our math NJSLA results for grades three through nine also. Once again, you're going to look at the light and dark green bars. They highlight the percentage of students meeting and exceeding grade level math expectations. Look at our Algebra I and Geometry scores. We're very proud of them. And it's also important to point out that eighth-grade students appear lower because so many of our students take algebra tests in grade eight. So if you look at the middle school Algebra I, you can see our performance similarly. Algebra I High School shows no dark green because most advanced math students took this assessment in middle school. Again, this shows another orientation of this last slide, and the green stars emphasize a large decrease in our Level Two students and a jump in our Level Four students. So this slide shows science, which doesn't look as promising. This scientist tested cumulatively, and the test has changed in recent years. So Ben shared today that he has reached out to Pearson several times seeking feedback about how the test is scored, what students are being tested on, because it is a cumulative exam. We used to show that we were, I feel like almost all of our students were meeting and exceeding in previous years. That's changed, but you're going to see a few in a couple slides. We outperformed the state. So I feel like at this point, we don't know enough about this assessment. We do get very specific information from Pearson about math and ELA. We just don't have that information for science, so we're hoping to get something. But you'll see, we did outperform the state, so this is not specific or unique to Wayne. This is just the supporting data for science, and there really hasn't been a big change in science since the assessment. It changed in 2022. So since 2022, we've seen not a steady decline, we've just been pretty stable. And again, coming up is the state comparison, which will tell a bigger story. So this slide, we're very proud of. This shows the ELA comparison for the state versus the district, and you can see we outperformed the state at every grade level by a lot, which is really interesting. See, that's in green. This slide shows the math comparison for the state versus the district, and once again, we outperformed the state. Again, look at Algebra I, middle school. Look at our geometry for high school. Look at seventh grade. So we do well. And this is what I was referring to before. So you can see, we outperformed the state for science scores, but again, we're seeking more information to have a better understanding of the test. This is a five-year ELA longitudinal study. There's a black line, so if you look closely, that line separates the pandemic year. So you can see we're moving our way up. There was a big dip during the pandemic, and you can see that we're making gains overall. There were some places where we dipped down. We went up, we dipped down a little bit. There are places where we've just shown a steady increase. You should look closely, grade nine. I think that's by our biggest point of pride there. So you made significant gains in ninth grade ELA. This is the five-year longitudinal study for math. Again, the black line separates the pandemic year, and you can see that after the pandemic dip, we're making steady gains as well. Now, we're going to go into our demographic analysis, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Glass, and he is going to report out on these slides. Do you want me to clip for you?
Thank you. This feels a little strange, taking over for your presentation on your last board meeting. So thank you for the opportunity here. I apologize, a lot of this is going to seem redundant. What we have coming up in the next few slides are, they're in pairs. So we have a bar graph such as this one, which makes things a little bit easier to read, followed by what the state of New Jersey requires, and that's a pretty messy chart which shows three years of data across five categories across different grade bands, broken down by a lot of different subgroups. First one we have here, so this is the district-wide distribution by ELA and race. Just like the previous slides like this, we've seen a whole lot of light green and dark green. Those are the portion of students who are considered proficient by the state of New First messy slide that we was talking about, we're required to report. This has our grade band subgroup, three-year comparison for ELA. We have a couple of green stars here highlighting areas of significant improvement in the past year. Significant improvement in ELA, so increases for both elementary Black and high school Hispanic students this past year. I hope you're not going to get tired of hearing how good ELA went throughout all this year. We have the district-wide distribution for math by race. Continue to have a lot of green on this one as well, and then the much messier breakdown of all of the categories across all the different years. Math is a place where we've been relatively stable in this past year. Here we have the distribution district-wide for science. It does look a little bit different. The Department of Education only uses four scoring categories in science versus the five for ELA and math, so the colors are going to look a little bit different here. Still the same, light green and dark green are considered passing by the state of New And we talked a little bit about some challenges, at least with that science test or presentation. The three-year subgroup grade band comparison for science, a couple of areas just to point out here. We had significant improvement by decreasing the portion of middle school Hispanic and Black students district-wide in the lowest performance band for science. Here we have the gender comparison, and this is just the portion of students who were passing. It was stable this last spring for ELA. Our female students have typically performed a little bit better than our male students. It's something we see in a lot of school districts as well. The same information by grade band across each of the five performance categories. Did want to note that for both male and female students had a large increase in the portions passing for the ELA nine again. The gender comparison district-wide for math from the last three years. Again, stable, and on this side, our male students slightly outperformed our female, something also consistent with a lot of school districts there. Same information by grade band and performance level. To note here, we had a smaller portion of female students considered partially meeting expectations, along with an increase in the portion meeting expectations, and that was going to be across all of our high school tests in math. Gender for science. Again, case where the scores by gender had been pretty stable for us over the last few The grade band breakdown for that didn't really have any significant changes there So back to the top, but instead of gender, we're showing comparisons across special programs. So this is the three-year passing rate for special programs. We will see a couple of them blanked out for suppression rules. Did want to point out that the spring of 2023, so not this past spring, the spring before, statewide special education passing rate for ELA was only 17.9%. That same information is not yet available from this most recent year, but just to point out, for us, we had more than 40% more of our special needs students were passing the ELA test compared to the state average. Just really good. Again, same information, just in a slightly messier format. So the three-year ELA distribution by each program and grade band had an increase in passing scores specifically in our elementary multilanguage learners, as well as improved performance across all levels for high school special education, so the ELA nine test again. Three-year passing rate for special programs related to mathematics, performance has been mostly consistent. The way that the sum of the math is reported by the state doesn't make a comparison like we did for ELA and special ed valid, the results are kind of all over the place. But the three-year grade band program breakdown for math weren't any significant differences from 23 to 24. Onto science. Science has less grade levels tested than the other ones, and some of our subgroups have been suppressed for this one. So three-year passing rate for special programs in science, for the purposes of the state comparison here, statewide average passing rate for special education students in 2023 was under 7%. So our most recent results here nearly double the passing rate for special education students compared to the rest of the state. The same three-year grade band distribution by special programs. In this particular case, we had our elementary special education students improve by having a much smaller portion of students in the lowest performance category here. Last two slides, these are not for the NJSLA, but first, this is about the DLM. New Jersey describes the DLM as an alternate assessment for students with most significant intellectual disabilities, and it is in English, language arts, mathematics, and science. DLM stands for Dynamic Learning Maps. We're required to report these even though we have a very small number of students, so there's not much we can publicly share about the results on this one. Finally, this is our three-year distribution by grade and grade band by performance level on the access test. And the access test is the multilingual learner's student assessments, tool measures proficiency in the English language. Important to note that students come into Wayne with such a wide range of experiences here. We also have had a lot of growth in this population, making a three-year comparison kind of tough to work with when broken down like this.
So parents all receive an individual student report. One of the things that has been really beneficial for past several years here is we have a data warehousing software, and teachers can look at individual student data, and they can see based on standards. We have standards-aligned assessments. We have common assessments that we give across our elementary schools, across our middle. We've worked really hard to have common assessments in both high schools. This way, all students are being assessed equitably and fairly, and everything's aligned to a standard. So we can actually look as deep as saying, in our classes, 88% of the students performed, got number 12 and 13 aligned to a specific standard correctly, and maybe in your class, only 60%. And we could look back and say, oh, you were absent that week with the flu. It was in there, there was a substitute. We have grade level conversations, and it could be as simple as, well, we talked and the students didn't understand, so we spent an extra day, but we didn't tell you because you were out, or the sub kept following your plans, and it informs pacing guides for curriculum instruction. So I think that we have done a really, really good job just learning how to interpret all of this information. And we also have a changing demographic of students. We have a growing multilingual learning population, and a lot of these students are coming in, we talked about today, some of them coming to school for the first time in lower grades, some of them coming in without foundational skills. And, you know, a lot of work is being done to just say, how do we assimilate them into our classroom environment and get them caught up knowing that there are grade level requirements and classes that they need to take, and that there are a lot of skills and gaps that we need to fill in for them. So, you know, looking at where our kids are with literacy in ninth grade, if you look back, I would say when we started nine years ago, 10, we put in, we did most in reading. We put in a foundations, foundational skills program. We invested a lot in guided reading and literacy training for our teachers so that we could keep moving our readers. And you can see, over time, if you stick with us, the kids really do really well. And you see by the time they get to high school that we have a lot of interventions in place to get them to that point. The report that will be online tomorrow shows the individual school reports, and I know many parents and community members are interested to see that, and that'll be fully available tomorrow morning.
So if I could just add one thing, I know Dr. Glass, you mentioned this. So this is Mrs. Reichman's last board of ed meeting, and while everything that we do here, we're a big district, everything we do is a team effort, I did want to ask or just take a moment to recognize her. Because in the end, she is the assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction. She oversees all of our academic programs, and ultimately, this has been her major area of work over the past many years that we've been working together. So I'm sure it is a very nice thing to exit the district and see our students doing so well academically. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize you. It's a team effort, but...
Thank you. It was a labor of love. It really was. A great team. I actually am laughing because as I'm presenting, everything is beeping, and so you never know if there's an emergency here. You always have to stay in touch. And it's all of our directors, because our technology director noticed that the northern lights, you can see them, and she wanted to make sure that we all knew. So it's constant contact, so I know we'll still be in touch. There's always an ongoing group chat about something outside of school, so you don't know if it's an emergency or just something that's important, like, go outside quickly and look at the sky. It's nice. So it's a family effort.
Look at it.
The board, if you have any questions, forward them to the education committee, and we'll get back to you with that. Thank you both.
Thank you.
I don't even know what's...
Thank you.
No speeches.
Thank you for all the opportunity.
You know, if you look at the improvement we've had in the recovery from the pandemic, it's incredible where our numbers were and where they've come to. And that's a lot of people working really hard. And, you know, people are saying, oh, you're never going to get back. Yeah, it took us a good three years, but we're back, and we're moving forward. And everybody has the same issue with the science. Nobody knows where they're going or what they're doing with it. It's just like, we're just another state mandate that they came out with that, again... But again, who's making money off of this? It's great to know, great information for us, good feedback, but buy the textbook from Pearson, buy the test material, pre-test material from Pearson, and Pearson charges the state for the test. So who's making the money here? But that's another rant for another day on mandated testing.
Good one.
The visions, the agenda, Mr. Moxley.
We have a few tonight. One is under L. Education. Number one, approval of out-of-district professional travel for staff members. On attachment, we're going to remove number 24 and number 25. Also, under Q, school resource legal, we're going to add a resolution tonight. Approval of employment separation agreement and release and revocable letter of resignation. That reads as follows: Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of Superintendent, hereby approves the employment settlement agreement and release and revocable letter of resignation in the matter employee ID number 7337 dated October 10, 2024, as attached by reference, and further authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute same on behalf of the Board. The business administrator and Superintendent are authorized to take all further steps required by the terms of the settlement and further implement same. And that concludes the changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. With this portion of the meeting open to citizens for comments on agenda items only, residents are asked to state your name, address, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged and spread the negativity of adding employee or student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under all business. Do I have a mover? Mr. Giordano. Mrs. Rigoloso. Anyone from the public on agenda items?
Seeing no one, I'm close.
Do I have a mover for the agenda?
Move the agenda.
Giordano.
Please do.
Roll call.
Mr. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lemandry?
Yes.
Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Rieloso?
Yes.
Mrs. Winting?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
Yes.
And Mr. Pavlek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are asked to state your name or address, subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or student. Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at a subsequent meeting under old business. Do I have a mover?
Move.
Giordano, Mrs. Lemandry. Anyone from the public wishing to speak about anything?
See, no one moved close.
Uh-oh. Sorry. Come on, Paris. I just wanted to, first of all, thank Mr. Pavlek and Mr. Gephardt for your support for the Sayad County 200 Club. We've got our Italian night dinner fundraiser happening on November 12th, and I want to extend my invitation to all of you to join us there. As you know, the Sayad County 200 Club supports our first responders. Should any of them fall in the line of duty, we come and support their family, and we're working to do so much more than that. So, November 12th, you all, everyone at home, you're welcome, please. Just go to pc200club.org to buy tickets, and if you'd like to sponsor, like Mr. Gephardt's law firm did, we would appreciate that too. That's also on the website as well. Thank you.
Prop starting. President of Wayne Education Association, I just want to take a moment. I didn't realize this was going to be your last one. I thought you'd have the last one, and I just want to say how thankful we have been to have you as a support for our teachers, and I'm really going to miss working with you. I always know that I can call you. I know you're always there if I have a question. I just appreciated working with you over all these years. And on behalf of the teachers and secretary of the Wayne Education Association, I'd just like to thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else in the public?
All right, see, no one moved close.
It's better. Mrs. Rieloso. Any old business, new business? I just have one thing on your new business. Previously, there was an allegation of harassment made against a board member. The board had an independent investigation conducted. All allegations of harassment were unfounded, according to the report. Any further comments? Motion to adjourn. Motion. Mr. Paul?